Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order at 5:45. I'm going to acknowledge the meeting's status before we go to closed session. Members of the public may directly address the board by attending in-person meetings and submitting a public comment card. The board will not take public comments through the online platform and does not guarantee online streaming should that platform malfunction for any reason. Members of the public are encouraged to share their thoughts and concerns with our board president, Maddie Cloud, at mcloud@petk12.org if they are not able to attend in person. All right, do we have comments from the public on any closed session items? Seeing none, we will adjourn to our closed session and we'll be back at 6 o'clock for the best part of the meeting. We are back from closed session. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance if you'd like. All right, we have nothing to report on action taken during the closed session. We go on to number seven, our special recognition reports and presentations. Our first presentation is the introduction of the new certificated coordinator for special services.
We are pleased to announce the assignment of Dana Zapanta as the new coordinator of special services for Petaluma City Schools. Dana brings a wealth of experience, leadership, and compassion to this role, having served most recently as program manager within Petaluma City Schools. Dana was born in Milpitas and grew up camping and exploring the outdoors with her family and two older brothers. She began her own family in 2004 and is proud mother of two boys ages 20 and 16 and three beloved dogs. Dana enjoys spending time with her family and friends, gardening, relaxing at the river, and camping. Dana earned her bachelor's in psychology cum laude from Sacramento State University in 1996 and her MA in school psychology in 2002. She received her pupil personnel services credential in 1999 and her administrative credential in 2014. Dana began her career with SCO in 1998 as the first school psychology intern, helping to establish a program that has since grown to serve many students. She has supported students with a wide range of needs, providing assessments, counseling, behavioral support, and social skills instruction, while collaborating closely with families and staff to develop individualized learning plans. She later served as principal for SCO's transition program for young adults, preschool program, and classes for those with extensive medical needs. Dana worked to promote student independence through community-based learning, vocational training, and hands-on experiences while fostering inclusive and supportive environments where all students could thrive. She has built strong partnerships with the community organizations and employers to expand vocational and independent living opportunities for students. Her dedication to inclusion and student success has been recognized with the lifetime achievement award from the Sonoma County Mayor's Committee to 2020 and the Outstanding School Psychologist Award from the California Association of School Psychologists, 2011. Dana looks forward to collaborating with district staff, families, and community partners to strengthen programs and services that promote equity, inclusion, and meaningful learning for all students. Please join us in congratulating Dana Zapanta on her new role as coordinator of special services for Petaluma City Schools.
Thank you. Thanks for the kind introduction and the warm welcome. I'm excited to be here and I'm excited to be able to expand on the work that I'm doing with Petaluma City Schools in this new capacity as program coordinator. Honoring students' rights and inclusive practices are very important to the work that I do. Practices where every learner is valued and supported to reach their individual and their full potential, which can look very different for different students. Supporting the many dedicated teachers and related service providers we have in the district is also an important part of this work that we do, and I'm really looking forward to expanding my capacity here and being able to reach out to more people. So, thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Now we have Students of the Month recognitions, and so we're going to start with Ken Elworth Junior High.
Ken Elworth Junior High School is proud to announce our October Student of the Month, Carthick Sonder. Carthick was chosen Student of the Month and is truly deserving of this recognition. Carthick is an outstanding 4.0 student and a multi-instrumentalist athlete and boy scout. The effort Carthick makes to excel in all of his endeavors is nothing short of inspirational. Carthick's teachers describe him as enthusiastic, positive, and pleasure to have in his class. Carthick is in his second year of band at Ken Elworth and impressively, he plays the flute, saxophone, trumpet, and piano. Mr. Clementoff, Carthick's band teacher, shared, "Carthick is one of the top players in the eighth grade symphonic band. He's doing a fantastic job playing the flute and saxophone. We are short in the brass section and Carthick volunteered to pick up the trombone. Being pro- pros- pros- prosigant on the wind and brass instruments is extremely difficult and Carthick excels at it." When Carthick is not in the classroom, he keeps a busy schedule running for the Colts cross-country team and swimming competitively. Carthick is also a proud member of the Boy Scouts of America and has earned the rank of star. Carthick had, Carth- sorry, Carthick shared that last summer he completed a 500-mile backpack trip in the immigrant wildness with his troop. Ken Elworth is proud of Carthick and we are confident that he has a bright future ahead of him.
Thank you. Congratulations. Can we have Carthick's family stand, please, so we can appreciate you? Thank you so much. Okay?
Ken Elworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our October Student of the Month, Eden Stempak. Eden's teacher selected her a Student of the Month because she is a model student who embraces challenges, always puts her best step forward, and brightens any room she's in with her humor and kindness. Mr. Radke, Eden's science teacher, shared, "Eden is a model of self-advocacy and academic performance. If every student asked questions and spoke up for themselves like she does, the job of teaching would be easier and more fun. In addition to that, she's just a wonderful student to have in class. Her attitude is pleasant, her work ethic is consistent, and she's a force for calm and balance in the classroom. She's a pleasure to have in science." When Eden is not making her teachers' lives easier, she spends her time horseback riding, volunteering with the Giant Steps, and spending quality time with her family and friends. Eden is an advocate for mental health and is proud of taking charge of her own, which has allowed her to become competent with and driven, wait, has become the competent and driven young woman we all know today. Eden's favorite class is KTV, which her teacher says she immersively invested in and for good reason. After high school, Eden plans to study journalism and Prejudice University. Whoa, prestigious. Such as Berkeley, to one day become a news anchor. Eden is a rock star and Ken Elworth can't wait to see all of her future accomplishments.
Thank you. Congratulations, Eden. Can your family stand, please, so we can acknowledge you? Congratulations. Okay, thank you. Now we have Petaluma Junior High. Have you warmed up yet?
Yes. I was out canvassing, so you and I are ready to go. So, our regular student rep can be here, so you guys get Plan B. Petaluma Junior High School is proud to introduce our October Student of the Month, Hannah Stubbs. Hannah was chosen by her teachers as Student of the Month because of her compassion and care she shows to others, in addition to the academic excellence she displays. Hannah can be found making her rounds in the morning, greeting staff and students with a friendly smile and check-in. Hannah goes out of her way to connect with and support peers with learning differences at school as well. While Hannah maintains straight A's, it is her genuine empathetic nature that makes her a standout bantam. Hannah's parents are extremely proud of her success. They share that Hannah has made tremendous growth in her studies, proving that hard work always yields amazing results. Another thing that makes Hannah special is that she stands up for what is right, demonstrating strength, curiosity, and courage at all times. Hannah's favorite thing about school is the staff and how friendly everyone is. Hannah enjoys playing basketball and spending time with her family outside of school. Hannah is looking forward to attending high school with her brother next year, as well as trying out for more sports. After high school, Hannah would like to study business and accounting in college, then she would like to open her own restaurant. I must say Hannah joined us just this year and you can see her positivity and her smile all around campus, and it demonstrates what Petaluma Junior is all about. Congrats, Hannah.
Congratulations, Hannah. Can your family stand and we can bring in that darling little girl?
All right, Clay, get up here, buddy. Petaluma Junior High School is proud to introduce our other October Student of the Month, Clay Cummings. Clay was chosen by his teacher as Student of the Month because of his outstanding diligence and dedication to his academics and athletic pursuits. Clay's teachers commend his lovely manners, noting that he always says please and thank you. Clay is a team player in his math groups. He can be counted on to offer his classmates assistance whenever needed. Clay's family is also very proud of his accomplishments. They are amazed at the effort Clay puts into whatever he sets his mind to. His family also shared that Clay exudes kindness to everyone he interacts with outside of school as well as inside of school. Clay's favorite thing about Petaluma Junior is the overall school environment. He said he appreciates how everyone at school is helpful and kind. Outside of school, Clay plays football for Petaluma Panthers. He also enjoys hunting and fishing. Clay is looking forward to playing football and meeting new people in high school. After high school, Clay plans to attend college and study to become a lawyer. I must say about Clay, he just presented to some parents today on tour and he has the poise of a seasoned politician, so we're very happy to have Clay. He's our poster boy at Petaluma Junior. Congrats, buddy.
Congratulations, Clay. Okay, can his family please stand so we can acknowledge you? Thank you. Okay, now we have Casa Grande.
I'm proud to represent Jasmine Pon as one of the Students of the Month. Jasmine is a key club co-president and National Honor Society vice president. She has been involved in tennis and basketball for all four years at Casa Grande. Jasmine volunteers with Miracle League and at the Petaluma Valley Hospital. This summer, she has become a certified nursing assistant and is registered with the California Department of Public Health. She's also a part of FARM's leadership program and participated in climate action pathways for schools. In her free time, she enjoys spending time with her friends, doing puzzles and Legos, and going on long car rides. Jasmine liked to thank her friends and family for always supporting her. After high school, she plans to go to a four-year college and study human biology with the goal of becoming a pediatric oncologist. Congrats, Jasmine.
Congratulations, Jasmine. Can your family please stand?
Congratulations. I'd like to present Ronan Curley for the Student of the Month. Ronan is an athlete, scholar, and volunteer that values balance in all parts of life. He devotes his time to developing his skills as a running back in football, maintaining a high GPA, and leading build club, a STEM outreach club he founded at Casa Grande. It teaches science and engineering concepts to high school and elementary school students. His two passions are engineering and entrepreneurship, which he hopes to combine in his future career. Ronan works towards these goals today by tinkering with projects at home and developing product prototypes, expressing his creative side beyond academics and athletics. He also enjoys the beach, cliff jumping, spending time with his family, the gym, skiing, and traveling. Ronan likes to be productive but still make sure to prioritize his social life, personal interests, and family. Congrats, Ronan.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Ronan. Can your family please stand too, so we can acknowledge you? Well done. Okay, Petaluma High School, save the best for last.
Okay, um, this is my friend and beautiful classmate, Shadani Herrera. She is a senior at Petaluma High School where she is known as Responsible Student. However, she grew up in Mexico, playing with her neighbors outside her home and spending every hour with her loving family. She made the decision to travel to an unknown country with the desire to better herself. During her time at school, she has taken 10 AP classes. Although it was difficult, she never gave up and continues to try. In addition to Spanish and English, she took French with me because she believes language is a real way to connect with people. In her senior year, she was a linker leader because she wanted to make Frenchmen feel welcome and help them in the same way that she was helped. Shadani plans to attend a four-year university and major in psychology or cognitive science. She aspires to work for the FBI and becomes someone who saves and helps people who cannot defend themselves. During her year of study, she wants to conduct research and experiments to people's behaviors in various scenarios that remain unresolved today. She is preparing to be a leader for Latina women who suffer violence in their daily lives. Being a student, Shadani means having hope that she will achieve her dreams and that all her sacrifices such as learning another language, studying long hours, and being away from her family are worth it. This is why she is very grateful to all of her teachers and the people around her for always supporting her. Congrats.
Congratulations, Shadani. Do you have someone here to stand with you, a support system? There you go. Oh, they're on Zoom. Oh, good, good. Thank you.
All right, our next is Doxian Pa- sorry.
And research with the best mindset he brings to PHS. Awesome, congrats.
Congratulations, Daxion. Can your, is your family here? We can acknowledge them. Please stand. Nicely done. Okay. Carpe Diem.
Luke's actually not here, but I'll read about him real quick because he's a cool kid. All right.
And we want to hear about him.
Absolutely. All right, Carpe Diem High School is proud to present Luke Smiley as our October Student of the Month. Luke is an 11th grader who joined us at the beginning of the 25, uh, 26 school year, where he has demonstrated himself to be an exemplary student consistently attending school and earning A's in all of his classes, while also being co-enrolled in advanced placement studio art drawing at Petaluma High School. Luke previously attended Valley Vista Elementary, Live Oak Middle School, and Petaluma High School. His teachers unanimously selected Luke for this award and shared that he is a talented, persistent, respectful, and creative. He has had a positive impact on our school climate and culture and has been a great role model for other students. He consistently demonstrates strong skills in mathematics and produces fine works of art, including redoing my schedule poster in my room. Outside of school, Luke enjoys drawing, hiking, and working at the Phoenix. After high school, Luke is interested in welding as a possible career. Congratulations, Luke.
Thank you.
And now.
We have Snow Mountain.
All right, so, Snow Mountain High School is proud to present Jaslyn Albor Padilla as our October Student of the Month. Jaslyn is an 11th grader who joined us in the spring of the 24-25 school year, and she's really coming to her own this year and has excelled the first grading period, earning straight A's. She previously attended Mewoc Elementary, Kenorth Junior High School, and Casa Grande. Uh, she's shown really impressive growth this year, most notably around accountability and personal responsibility. Uh, she shows great initiative with regards to work completion, has been great at self-advocating, communicating with teachers, all qualities that are necessary for both school and life, uh, after it. Outside of school, Jaslyn enjoys painting, drawing, gardening, baking, and cooking. And after high school, Jaslyn is interested in studying marine biology or environmental studies. Congratulations, Jaslyn.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Jaslyn. Is your family here? Can we, uh, can you stand, please?
Yay!
Thank you all. That was so wonderful. Okay, so, um, yeah, I think we're gonna take like a five-minute break, but we'd like all the, uh, Students of the Month to come up here to take a picture and, uh, with us. But we also mainly want you, and, um, and then we'll reconvene at 6:30. Okay, thank you. Are we all ready?
Right, hold on.
We are reconvening at 6:31. Uh, so going on with the agenda, we have comments from the public on non-agendized items. We do have a speaker, um, and I will read our, um, our board, uh, comment card, or, sorry, our public comment. Yes. Policy. Uh, under Government Section 54954.3A, "Members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy, BP 1312.1, specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a certain district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period, which is now. Uh, once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a three-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter. Commenters may not see their time to others." Okay, and we have Marquita Lee, and it's on insurance requirements for adult drivers. So you want, all, these are all, each one of these?
All right. So the timer starts. Hello, I'm Marquita Lee. You, most of you know me. Um, I'm a parent of three lovely ladies over at Grant, one in fifth grade and twins in second grade. Um, I've passed out some papers to you. I apologize for the red. My toner is leaking still. Haven't figured out how or why. Um, but I'm here to talk about insurance twice today. This is the first time. So, um, on, when was it? On September 10th, we received an email from our lovely school district saying that the transportation, um, requirements were being updated. So one of the things I geek out on is insurance and risk management and math, of course. So one of the changes that had a pretty big impact is the increase in medical payments. So although going from $5,000 to $10,000 doesn't seem like a lot nowadays with medical costs, it's actually not a coverage that a lot of insurance companies actually offer. So, um, our insurance company for our family is American Family Connect Property and Casualty Insurance Company, which is provided through Costco. So I actually called them and they said, "We do not offer $10,000." So, um, one of the things that people think like, "Hey, medical payments, raise it up. It works if you're not at fault or if you are at fault. It's a great coverage. It does speed up your reimbursement if you do have medical costs." The problem, though, is that a lot of insurance companies don't offer it. And I can't call and say, "Hey, can I have it for a field trip for one day?" They don't offer it. So I think it's something you all might want to consider is that a lot of parents aren't going to increase because they just can't. Um, and then also, I gave you a handout, so it's for two rounds. But if you look at the top, that's our requirement sheet, or PCS's requirement, um, for drivers. So you'll notice that there's actually a few things that we can update that'll make it even more in PCS's favor. So one thing we want is we should want the underinsured uninsured motorists to match the BI limits. So let's say we, we can't raise it to $10,000 for medical payment. In the event there is a hit and law, like there's a hit, hit and run essentially, the uninsured in motorists will kick in. So that's where our focus should be. Let's make sure that parents have high limits for their uninsured motorists and not focus on the medical payments because it's so tiny at the end of the day. It's not gonna really help when there is like a really expensive medical situation. So just wanted to bring that to all's attention, that this is an area where parents aren't gonna do it because they can't. And also, I would update the form so that you actually say explicitly, "The uninsured should match the bodily injury limits." I think that would, 30 seconds, anything else? I think that's it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
The other papers are for when I talk the second time, so please keep them.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay. I see no one else who would, uh, to speak, so we will go on with the agenda. Uh, I need a, a motion to approve, adopt and approve the agenda.
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is adopted. Um, okay, and now we have activities from, I'm gonna start with school board members, and then anybody that wants to talk about anything you went to. Um, and then we will do our student board members, who was, as usual, are really busy. Uh, so we went to the Climate Roundtable for Cool Petaluma, the Fandango fundraiser for Friends of the Petaluma River, and the Anti-Racism Leadership Workshop and the LCAP Budget Advisory Meeting. I just want to say that the, um, Friends of the River fundraiser was really wonderful, and they had, um, the students from Phil Taccata's, um, Marine Science class. And they, there were four of them there, and they spoke to this big crowd. They were wonderful. They were quite inspiring. And they had done a field trip on, in kayaks, um, on the Petaluma River that was led by the Friends of the River. And, um, they were, uh, you know, just like, most of them had never been in a kayak, much less on the Petaluma River. And so it was really wonderful, and I thought that Phil did a fabulous job. He was quite eloquent about the impact of these types of trips, for these students, just to connect them to. Yeah, it's just really a wonderful thing. So that was wonderful to hear. Okay, and then going on, um, the Petaluma, sorry, Kenorth Junior High Basketball Game, the Black Student Union at PHS, TK Classroom Volunteering, McKinley Crossing Guard, and the School-Based Behavioral Health Interest Group Meeting on multi-payer fee schedule. Okay. Then the PHS Homecoming Parade, and the Anti-Racism Training, and LCAP, and, uh, Budget Advisory Committee. And then Caitlin, you went to the Mentor Me Recruitment Event. Was it pretty?
It was mostly very happy mentors, not a lot. There were some people that were interested in being mentors, but we still need to recruit 60 new mentors. So if you're not already a mentor with Mentor Me, we have a waitlist of, I think, 100 kids, and they've recruited 40 new mentors, so, um, it's really fun. I've had two mentees, um, and you can do whatever you all want to just spend an hour a week together. Eric and I usually go on walks. This time we went and got ice cream. It, it, you're not an academic mentor. It's really just spending some time with a kid who needs a, an adult role model that isn't a family member or a teacher, um, just another adult that cares about them.
And, and what, is it a, is it a, two hours a week?
It's, now it's one hour a week.
It's one hour?
One hour a week for, hopefully for at least two years. I don't know anyone that's quit after two years. Most of us stay until high school graduation and then still go to their choir concerts five years later at the JC.
You can do it for more than one hour a week, yes?
Oh, yeah, you, as much time as you and, especially if it's a high schooler, um, as much time as they can schedule. Like, my old mentee Sarah, I would take her on like a tour, a walking tour of UC Berkeley to like see what a college campus looks like, or go to the city for a day, just depending on your student, what they like to do, and what their guardian is comfortable with. Um, yeah.
Thanks. Thank you. Uh, okay, so now we have our student board members, and I'm gonna give this to Jessica to read because he wrote it out so beautifully.
Thank you. Yeah, Casa Grande has been very busy lately, and it's been making me very happy. So Casa Grande Varsity Volleyball has been doing so well this season, and for the first time in five years, they took a set from American Canyon, making all the goutchers very proud, so. Shout out to Emma Weinzinger and Addison Lenz, our varsity team captains, for leading the team. Casa Grande, um, also has been, um, having the student sections be really eventful. I just was at the Petaluma game for the volleyball, and it has been very lively, as well as our homecoming game. Um, the Spirit Squad is doing an amazing job and making everyone who's attending hyped and just excited about our school. Homecoming Week was from September 29th to October 4th, and we had amazing spirit days, and everyone went all out, especially for the Friday Spirit Day, which is Pink Out for Breast Cancer Awareness. The Homecoming Parade was full of creative clubs that really went all out, making Casa Grande proud of their innovative students. The Friday double rally schedule change was well received by students overall, and they were very excited about the new games we introduced, such as amazing performances from dance, cheer, and the volleyball team. And we introduced games like, um, when you get the blow-up bubble around you and you bump into someone else, that was, or when you're like, um, yeah, yeah, and then, or when you're, um, surf across the table and people are rolling under you. Definitely got people very excited. So that was really good. And then the Saturday was our football team brought excitement because they faced up against Redwood High and won 31 to 28. And Ronan Curly is a part of that team, so good job to him. And then on Saturday night, we had 821 tickets sold for Homecoming, and the dance was filled with spirit for, um, concert-themed. It had glow sticks and light-up sunglasses, and we also got fruta to give us really good ice cream. So everyone was very excited about that. Yeah, thank you.
Um, I can talk about mine. Um, I didn't write anything about Homecoming, but we had a fun Homecoming. She came to our Homecoming, too, so that was fun. And I did see you at the Homecoming Parade with the, um, "Yes on I" signs. I was like, "Yes." Um, speaking of "Yes on I," that's kind of what my focus has been the last week or so. Um, on Wednesday, we met with Mr. Harris and Mr. Aftab. We, we went to Raze and we got ice cream after. It was very fun. Um, with a bunch of students from, I kind of like made a committee of kids that I knew from my ASB class, leadership class, and then just kids that I thought would like represent the school well. And we all met at Raze. Everyone had great ideas. Um, we made an Instagram for trying to pass "Yes on I." We made, we've posted on it. Um, I've gone and talked, and I've gone into classes and talked about it. I got, like, I talked to my French class about it, and then the best part is I talked to my ASB class about it. Everyone's like super on board, very interested, and we're holding kind of like a rally tomorrow morning before school, um, of all the students. And we made a bunch of "Yes on I" posters. Um, we're getting "Yes on I" yard signs, and, um, um, I, obviously it's volunteer-only. We can't like give ASB credit for doing this because it's like political, but a lot of kids were super interested in it, and, um, they're bringing their friends and stuff, so. Um, I'm gonna bring a speaker. It's gonna be lit, so, um, yeah, come in. Um, and, because it, like, I turned 18 yesterday, two days ago. And so now, now I can vote too for it, but like, there's like two other 18-year-olds that I know that can actually vote. So we need all the parents driving by to be voting, so, yeah. Anyway, that went well, and it's going good, and people are excited, so, yeah.
Thank you. That is wonderful. Oh, I'm so excited. You keep me chilled, you guys. That is, there's hope. And then Ruby wasn't able to come, um, because she's, um, for, you know, she's getting ready for the Hispanic Heritage Day tomorrow at San Antonio High School, and so it's very exciting, and she's really putting all this stuff together. And so, um, her mom was sick last week, so she got behind a little bit, but she regrets not being able to come. So I'm gonna read her report. She's been, uh, she's got students together to work on pinatas in art for the, for the heritage event. Stevie's Cafe had a, uh, offering with a Hispanic twist. Um, there are shadow boxes and vision boards that they're finishing up, and they're, the cooking club was making salsa. So, um, that's, oh, it's tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow, 11 o'clock.
At 10:50 to 11:50.
Yes, 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 yes.
That must be a, a class period, maybe? Yeah. And so, and it's at San Antonio High School on Vallejo Street, and, um, it's gonna be very, very cool. I'm really excited. All right, I think, anybody else? Okay, moving on, we have comments from the public on consent items. Okay, we have one. And that's for this one, right? Okay. So we have Marquita Lee for the insurance waiver for contractors.
I don't think that's on consent.
It's not on consent. It's on the, uh, it's on the.
Oh, it's not a consent, oh, it's an action.
It's on action. I'll keep it.
No, you're good.
No, you're good. You're good. They keep me on track here.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All right, um, any questions or comment?
I do.
Okay.
Um, under ratification of contracts, um, I had a question about, because there's, it's always listed what fund it's being charged to, and it says facilities, and I was confused about if it's facilities or bond, and also is facilities a restricted, um, fund?
That is a great question. That often comes up. Um, I think a lot of times bond and facilities are used interchangeably. The way we use them here is when we talk about the facilities department, that is our capital facilities, our construction department. We also have a maintenance and operations department is how we break out the distinction between departments. When we're talking about funding, um, when there is bond funds listed on the agenda, it means that the item is being paid for specifically with bond funds, which are legally restricted to the project's outline in the voter-approved bond measure. When we use the term "facilities funding," it refers to a broader category that can include multiple restricted funding sources, such as developer fees, deferred maintenance, or routine restricted maintenance.
So there's several things rolled into the facilities piece?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question, but it's not on contract, so I think if you have contract questions, we should stay on. Yeah.
Okay, so my question is about the same contract, and I just was interested, um, about, um, the cost of it, per year, because it was kind of embedded. So I think I would like to know that, how long the, the contract is for. And then really, most importantly, how does it complement and coordinate with Van Pelt, which is the, uh, construction management firm? And that it's being paid for by the 2024 bond, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Had to think about that. We talk about the 2014 bond all the time, so yes. Um, I think you were referring to the Key Analytics contract? Yep.
Sorry.
Nope, that's okay. So that con, that contract will provide financial management and reporting that integrates with our current accounting system. So what we are not able to do with our financial system is run specific reports around, um, we have, now we have four bonds in our system. We still have our two 2014 bonds, and now we have our 2024 bonds. Our system doesn't really distinguish total project costs, so what this platform does, it is, allows for things like our bond oversight committee annual reporting. It will break everything up by project from historical. Our financial system only looks at a year at a time, so we could go back. If a project took seven years to complete, we, it will tell us how much was spent in each year, um, what specifically for. So that, that's one of the things that this system does that are, we don't have anything like that. Historically, we've used Google Sheets and a whole lot of staff time to try to manually track, and everything doesn't always add up when we are looking at our annual bond audit. Um, this, the $76,000 annual cost reflects, um, a monthly data upload, so they will take directly from our financial system, reconcile it. It also does budget management and cash flow, which in the state of the, our current economy is going to become even more important, um, that we make sure that our bond fund is self-sustaining with cash, which it will be for a few years since we sold the first series. There is a one-time setup fee, and then, um, this is a five-year contract, but it will need to come back to the board each year to allow for what the annual services would be. So we're starting with year one. Van Pelt is our construction management firm, and they oversee the program management on the construction side. Key Analytics complements that work by providing financial tracking and reporting tools. Both PCS and Van Pelt staff will use the Keystone Platform daily to manage budgets, monitor expenditures, and track funding sources. Because our district's accounting software operates on a fiscal year cycle, this is what enables us to look at a project completion. We are using the new, um, 2014, 2024 bond, met, funds to pay for this. And one of the main reasons why we would like to move forward is given the size and the complexity of having, um, more than one district and more than one bond. It will help us maintain accurate financial tracking, and this system will minimize the risk of human error and ensure that all expenditures are appropriately accounted for and in a reportable form that is easy for the, our taxpayers and our staff and families to read.
Great. Thank you very much. It's very complicated.
Yeah.
And expensive. So then, is there, it, so then this is specific to bonds. I didn't ask you this, I'm sorry, ahead of time, but just off the top of my head. So specific to bonds, would we have something of similar, or could they do something similar with our parcel tax monies? Or is that because it's local measure, they wouldn't have that kind of, um, platform? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, this, what we're doing here is, it is, this contract is for the bonds, but they also, as part of what they do, they will also work with our developer fees, so our facilities funding. Um, as for the parcel tax, I'm sure that they, um, are willing, they were, they may only work with facilities. I'm not sure. The difference between the parcel tax and a lot of our bond is our parcel tax is an annual set amount that we spend annually, so it's easier for us to track internally what's being charged there. And if, we do not have currently any carryover in any of our ba, our parcel taxes, I'm sorry. But if we did, you know, that we're able to track internally, but we could look at them to see if they had any options and ask them.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
I had a question about the policy and reg about absences and excuses. I thought we had talked about it, including like tour, excused absences for tours of universities and colleges. And I didn't see that anywhere in there, so I wasn't sure, um, if that was something else, and I'm just confusing two things, or? Okay. I didn't see it in the ones that were uploaded, but that doesn't mean. I only, sorry, I, I only noticed it today because I wanted to see how far down they had put it. Because it does, it does have the entertainment thing that we were kind of making light of, because that's insane. But I didn't see like college or university. Yeah, so maybe it's just the wrong one uploaded. I'm not sure.
Good catch, Caitlin. Wow. That, that was in there.
That was just one of the only changes I remembered sticking out, so, yeah.
Looked at it and, yeah. Let me, um.
Would that have been in the AR or the policy?
It would have been in the AR.
Yeah, I didn't see it in either. I just did Ctrl+F for tour or college or university.
Yes. Um, let me see what the discrepancy was there.
Okay.
The, what I brought to you that had the, the Xed out. We show you the comparison. It was in that document, um, and then what was uploaded. So let me, I can read that back.
So somebody was making a motion.
Yeah, I'll move to amend the consent agenda to table, um, the regulation and BP 5113 to the next meeting.
Do I have a second? Okay. Any discussion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? No? Okay, so we will, um, the consent agenda is passed. Okay, now we have comments from the public on action items. And now we have Marquita for the insurance waiver for contractors.
All right, I'm back. This time I'll take a breath. The three minutes, man, it's rough. I could talk forever, but three minutes. So, yeah, so in front of you, if you don't mind pulling it up, so, behind the driver requirements. So something I brought up last school year was about the Santa Rosa City Schools long form. So I think this was done, and thank you, uh, in particular for Grant, because we want to bring, um, a certain independent contractor to our school, and he doesn't have the sexual molestation liability insurance. We're finding, and our vendors are finding, it's hard to buy that insurance as an individual, essentially, but it is important, like, we value it. I love insurance. I geek out on it. So I did want to propose again to you all that maybe transitioning to a long form for independent contractors. What's nice about the Santa Rosa form, which is public, this was on their board site, is that it does say it's only required when you're directly supervising children. So for instance, Dave Nettle, he's in the classroom with a teacher and the principal. He is not directly supervising students, so I think we might need to, I would recommend pivoting to having a long form so that you could have, um, that language that Santa Rosa uses, as well as lowering the limits. So for instance, like after-school play programs or enrichment, they probably should still have it, but a million dollars is a pretty high limit as an individual. So one consideration is what is doing a long form, because it could be specific like that versus the current short form on the Petaluma website. Secondly, lowering the limit, so if you're an independent contractor, one person, then you really probably don't need a million. It's hard to get a million dollars, but it probably is easier to get maybe, you know, 100,000. I hate to say to 25,000. We know we've gotten quotes for that, or our independent contractors have, but I think a million is kind of a high limit to ask for an independent contractor at this time, just given the, the market. Um, and then the last suggestion is, I don't know if you all have partnered with RESIG, if they have any ideas or suggestions in terms of their broker, and if they can help, you know, us as PTAs and other entities kind of get this insurance. Um, again, I love insurance. I value it. Again, I love insurance, I value it. So I appreciate the waiver. I do think I did want to express a concern of the reason you have people buy this insurance is that it's a financial backstop. So I like to think of like a cupcake, right? Like your cupcake, the base part is your actual cake, and that's your indemnification, right? So a big company like a Google, a Meta, they'll indemnify. Like, you want them to identify you because they have, they have the financials, right? They got the zeros. So to tell a contractor, hey, you don't have to carry insurance, just indemnify us, they don't have assets. So you're kind of like, you're wa, you're waiving something you would never get anyways. So at least if you require a $25,000 limit or $50,000 SAM limit, you get something as a district. But if by doing the waiver, you're just paying out of your pocket directly. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Twenty-five seconds.
Thank you. I appreciate the effort, because I know this is in particular for Grant. But I think saying, hey, for this independent contractor, he doesn't actually need it because he's being supervised by the principal and the teacher. So I know it's hard to put new forms into place. But again, I think the Santa, I think Santa Rosa's figured it out. So that's one example. I'm sure there are other others out there. But but they also have lots of other good details I would take from too. So, all right, thank you.
Well, look at that, perfect. Okay. Thank you. I have an insurance brokers. Really? It's awesome. It's like, it's always just a muddle to me. Okay. Moving on, our first action item is approval of Resolution 2526-09, declaring November as Native American History Month. I move to approve. Heritage Month. Excuse me. Still move to approve.
I'll second.
And I will read it.
And I just, before, before Maddie, before you read it, I just want to note that I want to appreciate Michael Mori, Principal at Penn Grove, who spent a lot of time editing this. And I thought, I think he did a really great, I think he did a really great job of editing this and making it an even even stronger resolution than than previous years.
And it's wonderful. Okay. This is a resolution of the Board of Education at Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts, declaring November as Native American Heritage Month. Whereas Native American peoples' histories and cultures are core to the story of the United States as the first peoples to live on and steward this land, and they continue to shape our country's character and cultural heritage today. And whereas Native Americans have made distinct and important contributions to the United States and the rest of the world in many fields, including the fields of agriculture, medicine, music, language, and art, which continue to thrive in Native communities across our nation today, including through cultural revitalization, resource protection, and the exercise of inherent sovereignty and self determination. And whereas tribal nations contributed to this great country's certain values and ideas that have become ingrained in the American spirit, the knowledge that humans can thrive and prosper without destroying the natural environment, the understanding that people from different backgrounds, cultures, religions, and traditions can come together to build a great country, and the awareness that diversity can be a source of strength rather than division. And whereas the state of California is home to nearly 200 Native American tribes, while Sonoma County has five federally recognized tribes within its boundaries, the Cloverdale Rancheria of Pomo Indians, the Dry Creek Rancheria Band of Pomo Indians, the Federated Indians of the Grayton Rancheria, the Kasha?
Kashi.
Kashiya Bound of Pomo Indians of the Stewart's Point Reservation, and the Linton Rancheria Band of Pomo Indians. And whereas Petaluma City Schools is located on the ancestral lands of the Coast Miwok People within the traditional homeland of the Federated Indians of Grayton Rancheria. And whereas Petaluma City Schools recognizes that colonial structures of oppression resulted in the death of millions of Native Americans, land dispossession, language and culture loss, diminished Native American knowledge and cultural authority, which left a legacy of tragedy and trauma that Native people still grapple with today. Whereas our tribal communities continue to confront disparities, including higher rates of poverty, unemployment, and health challenges, while working with strength and determination to overcome these barriers. And whereas Native peoples continue to demonstrate resilience, leadership, and cultural revitalization through language restoration, land stewardship, education, and community wellness efforts. Whereas the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education recognizes that each student needs an opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, to develop pride in their own identity and heritage, and to understand, respect, and accept the identity and heritage of others. And whereas the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education is committed to enhancing equity, inclusion, diversity, and partnership, and remains dedicated to providing schools and districts with resources and supports to implement the history, social science standards, and civic engagement, and promote understanding of economics, geography, world, and US history and government in schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education proclaims the month of November as Native American Heritage Month. Be it further resolved that the Petaluma City Schools commits to working in partnership with local tribes and Native communities to honor and uplift Native voices, histories, and contributions year round. Excellent. Okay. And we voted on it.
We didn't vote yet.
We didn't vote yet. All right. Do I, we have a motion? We, we, we call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Passes unanimously. Yay, that was really good. Okay. Approval of professional services agreements with King Consulting. I move to approve.
Second.
That's a teen item. I mean, uh.
All right, the contract for King Consulting Agreement. Petaluma City Schools continues to pursue state funding to support modernization, new construction, and charter school facility product projects. To assist these efforts, the district requires specialized support to complete the eligibility calculations, documentation, and applications needed for the state allocation board, the Office of Public School Construction, and CDE approvals. Proposition 2 provides $600 million statewide for the Charter School Facility Program funding, new construction and rehabilitation for eligible charter schools, with the first application round closing on October 30, 2025. These services will help ensure that Petaluma City Schools remains fully eligible for available state and charter facility funding, maximizing opportunities for reimbursement, and cost recovery on current and for future facilities projects. If approved, King Consulting will assist the district in preparing these applications and updating eligibility for the state school facilities program. Successful applicants are expected to be notified between February and March of 2026, receiving in advance for design and planning with remaining funds released after state approvals. Districts will have up to four years plus a one year extension if needed to obtain DSA and CDE approvals before converting to full funding. So what we have found out over the last month is that our traditional schools, we have $40 million of eligible for state match. That $40 million does not exist right now for traditional schools. But we know for sure that we will qualify for 50% matchup construction costs for the Penn Grove project that was completed a year and a half ago. And our current Mary Collins project, if, and the great thing is now is if we get, meet the deadline by October 30, there, we will be in line for the $600 million of funding on the charter level. So the two contracts are to help us with the traditional facilities funding. We need to get in line for when the state sells on Proposition 2, when they sell the next bond for that, for our traditional programs. And then for the charter, applications can be filled out now.
Okay.
I didn't realize that Prop 2 money could be used for projects that were happening before Prop 2. That's awesome.
Yes, there is a, a whole, that's, that's why there are no current funds for the traditional school programs. Because it was, it's a, what's the term that the state board? All of the applications that were already in. This is Meredith Johnson.
Oh, that was Meredith.
Go counsel here for something else, but she knows all things.
All things bond.
Bond and facilities. For Proposition 2, to get in line for the funding. I can't think of the term.
Like retroactive or what?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know. No. It's like, it'll come to me at 2:00 in the morning. And I will email everyone.
That's great. I mean, we were really, we needed Prop 2 to pass, it passed. And if this is what helps us get the money, I think it's worth it. I like that there are limits. Because I mean, that seems like a reasonable rate and a reasonable number of hours to get it done, to me.
And is that funded out of facilities?
So yes, this will use bond funds.
Bond fund. Any other questions? You guys have anything? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Okay, approval of Resolutions 2526-10, 11, and 12, authorizing filing of applications for state allocation board administered programs for the Petaluma City School District.
Great. I'm going to speak to Items 2 and 3 at the same time. One is for the elementary district, and one is for the secondary district. Though we were able to combine these items, when we make a motion for approval, if it goes forward, each resolution needs to be done separately.
Okay.
All right. These items relate to the State Allocation Board programs that provide funding for school construction, modernization, and facility improvements through the Office of Public School Construction. These include the School Facility Program, the Facility Hardship Program, and the Charter School Facility Program. Approval of these resolutions authorizes both districts to file applications for eligibility, funding, and certification under these state programs and confirms our commitment to maintaining the required five year master plan for the districts. For the School Facility Program, Resolution 2526-10 authorizes participation for the elementary district. And Resolution 2526-13 authorizes participation for the secondary district. For the Facility Hardship and Seismic Mitigation Programs, Resolution 2526-11 applies to the elementary district. Resolution 2526-14 applies to the secondary district. Finally, for the Charter School Facility Program, Resolution 2526-12 authorizes participation for the elementary district. And Resolution 2526-15 authorizes participation for the secondary district. By approving these resolutions tonight, the board ensures that both districts remain eligible to pursue state facility funding, potentially up to 15%, 50% reimbursement for qualifying new construction, modernization, or hardship projects, and positions Petaluma City Schools to maximize available state funding opportunities while reducing the local share of future facilities projects. And there, I did receive a question on, is there a cost for these resolutions? The Office of Public School Construction does not charge any fees for processing or submitting funding applications. The California Department of Education charges a plan review fee equal to 0.0007% of the total construction costs for each project. For example, on a $10 million project, the CDE fee would be approximately $7,000. And those are the only costs associated with the six resolutions.
Any questions? I just had, I, I, I think I'm still on the resolution. I was wondering, so this isn't, this isn't concerning Proposition 2? The applications?
It's to maximize Proposition 2 funding.
Okay, so it is connected. Okay, so this is, oh, perfect, thank you.
So this is giving us permission to apply for the thing that we just got the contract to help us with.
Yeah, so the contract came before.
Yes, because if you guys said no to that, we didn't need any of these resolutions.
But you did say that we are eligible, that you found out that we were eligible for for the funding matching.
Yes, we are, for all of schools.
And now we just have to apply for them.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, I need a, any other questions?
Yeah.
No, I was just gonna move it into, okay. I move to approve Resolutions 25-2.
It's gonna be one at a time.
No, this is all on the same one. Dash 10, 11, and 12 for the elementary school district.
Amanda was saying at the beginning that we have to do each resolution separately.
I thought it was just the two, is it each resolution or is it?
So we need to, a total for this, we'll do item, this is item two. So we'll do the first three, and then we'll move on to action items. So one at a time.
So, so, but we, we vote on the whole thing at once?
No.
No, we have to do each resolution separately.
Oh.
Unfortunately, for this one, we do.
I move to approve Resolution 2526-10.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve Resolution 2526-11.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Keep going.
I move to approve Resolution 2526-12.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move.
Go for it.
I move to approve Resolution 2526-13.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve Resolution 2526-14.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I move to approve, approve Resolution 2526-15.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful.
There we go.
Moving on to approval of Resolution Number 2525.
It's too many.
Dash 16. What does it say on the actual?
Filing of application for naming district representatives.
The item is correct, though just the title is wrong. It's 2526.
Okay, so the item is correct. Do we need to correct that in order to pass it? Because it says 2525-16. It should say 2526.
Just rename it. When you make the motion, rename, give it in your name. Give it the name you want to give it.
Right, okay. When I can, yeah, when I approve the resolution, I'll just use the right name, it's fine. When we move.
Do we have to change it? Oh, okay.
No, no.
All right, so when you move it, okay, perfect. Okay. Oh, it's 25. Is there an explanation for this one then?
There is. I have a lot of notes tonight, so.
Oh, yeah.
This resolution authorizes Superintendent Matthew Harris and myself as chief business official to act as the district's representatives for the state allocation board and the Office of Public School Construction Programs. This ensures we can efficiently sign and submit all required documents and maintain eligibility for state facility funding opportunities.
Wonderful.
Makes sense to me, as long as you all want to do it or want to enough. I move to approve Resolution 2526-16.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. The next resolution is 2526-19.
17.
17?
Yep.
For the elementary and Petaluma Joint School, High School Districts. Beyond bond authority, my goodness sakes, okay?
This is the last resolution for this group of funding. So this resolution ensures Petaluma City Schools remains eligible for future state facility funding once current bond authority is exhausted. The Office of Public School Construction now requires districts to adopt a resolution acknowledging that any new construction or modernization applications submitted after applications submitted after February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five will be placed on the beyond bond authority list until additional state bond funds become available. This, apparently I just needed to go to two items down to tell you what I was trying to say earlier. This is for the not charter schools. Um, there are currently no state bond funds, but once they become available. We are, this resolution will allow us to go onto the list of no funds available. So, um, this approval of this resolution keeps the district in compliance with state requirements and allows us to continue submitting eligible projects so they're ready for funding as soon as new bond authority is approved.
I move to approve resolution twenty-five, twenty-six, dash, seventeen.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The Petaluma City Elementary School authorizing the issuance and sale of one or more series of its twenty, twenty-twenty-six general obligations with funding forward delivery in the aggregate simple amount of not to exceed six million, eight hundred thousand. And authorizing the execution of necessary documents and certificates.
Put my microphone on. And related actions. Yes, so, um, this evening we have Meredith Johnson from DWK with us who will do a much better job explaining the next two resolutions than I ever could, but she'll come up. The great news is, is that we are in a position that we think we can save the taxpayers of Petaluma one million dollars by refunding our, both of our twenty-fourteen bonds.
Good evening. So this may look a little familiar, and you may remember back in April, you adopted two resolutions that look very similar to this resolution. Well, the bad news is that back in April, interest rates were such that there was a refinancing opportunity, but shortly thereafter, with the fluctuations in, um, the financial climate, those opportunities went away. However, they have come back and now there are actually additional opportunities. So, um, the resolutions you are approving are actually different than the ones you approved in April because they offer the opportunity to, um, refinance more bonds, different bonds than were approved back in April. Um, this resolution also increases the amount of bonds refunded under the April resolution, um, and I can tell you specifically, back in April, the elementary district was looking at refinancing about four point eight million dollars in outstanding bonds. Currently, that amount has gone up to five point six million. Um, so in addition to, as Amanda mentioned, authorizing the refunding of those bonds that were, that we discussed in April. We're increasing that amount of those bonds in April, and now we're adding, which were not in, um, as we say, we call it in the money, meaning they were not, um, interest rates were not such that if you repay, if you refinance them, you'd get a better deal. The twenty-fourteen series B bonds, those were not even up for discussion back in April, now they are currently, um, available for refinancing. So the resolutions that you have both increase the principal amount from April and then add the twenty-fourteen series B bond. You might notice there's some funny words in this new resolution, it says in parentheses, forward delivery. That's because, and I don't want to get too technical here, but there are rules unlike, we, we kind of analogize it to a mortgage when you refinance a mortgage. Um, the one major difference that I'll point out that you should know is that when you refinance a mortgage, you take a new mortgage out for additional thirty years. There's a rule in school bonds that when you refinance a series of bonds, you're not allowed to extend the maturity. So you don't increase the time of repayment for your taxpayers, you keep the pa- the repayment period the same, you simply lower the payments that they'll be making. Um, so the forward delivery, in addition, there is a rule, when you issue a series of bonds, you tell the investors who buy the bonds that you, you're not permitted to refinance them for a certain period of time, typically it's ten years. So, these twenty-fourteen series B bonds, that opportunity to refinance doesn't start until August first, twenty-twenty-six. So there's another rule that says that when you issue refunding bonds, you have to issue them within ninety days of your repayment rate, date. In other words, within ninety days of August first, twenty-twenty-six. So we're going to go out to investors and we're going to tell them about this opportunity, and they're going to agree to buy these refunding bonds, just the ones that are going to refund the twenty-fourteen series B in May, so that we're within the ninety-day timeframe. But we're going to lock in that interest rate in the next six to eight weeks, I believe it's even shorter than that, I think the next month or so. Um, because interest rates are so good right now, that you'll have the opportunity to lock in those interest rates today, but then not sell actually to investors until May. So that's what forward delivery, delivery means.
So, so by passing these, we've locked in whatever the interest rate is as of right now.
Actually, it's, um, it's not today, we need your permission to move forward with these transactions. And you're going to authorize Amanda and Matthew to work with your financial consultants, um, to pick the very best day in the market to go out to investors and to set those interest rates.
And if interest rates get suddenly worse in the next, it, it doesn't mandate us to do it, right?
We would not move forward, that is correct.
Right, that sounds like a lot of good things, yeah.
Yeah, kind of like last April, we did not move forward because interest rates changed.
Right.
That's wonderful, it really is good news. I was wondering, that's, I see if this is, um, part of that August date. In twenty-twenty-six, so we just got our property tax, um, and, um, bad timing, but, um, so if that's set, right, I mean, it just explains where all the, the, uh, our property taxes are, um, going.
So for twenty-five, twenty-six, interest, property tax rates are set for twenty-six, twenty-seven, these refundings will be taken into account.
Okay, and that's when we'll see the reduction. Excellent, thank you so much.
Great.
Any other questions? So, and then the high school is the same, it's just that it's a different, excellent, okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution twenty-five, twenty-six, dash, nineteen.
Second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye. I move to approve resolution twenty-five, twenty-six, dash, twenty.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Cool.
Motion's approved, thank you.
Refinancing.
Okay, one more, approval of resolution two, five, two, six, dash, eighteen, finding the proposed classroom building project at Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley exempt under SEQA and adopting categorical exemption. And then number two, approving the project, number three, authorizing filing of notice of exemption.
Thank you, this item requests board approval, or, sorry, let me start over. Of, uh, resolution twenty-five, twenty-six, dash, eighteen for the proposed classroom building at Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley. The project includes removing four portable classrooms and constructing a new two-story eight thousand nine hundred square foot building with seven classrooms, resource offices, and restrooms, resulting in a net increase of three classrooms on the campus. The project qualifies for a categorical exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. It meets the criteria for so- several exemption classes, including minor additions and reconstruction on existing school grounds. And there are no unusual circumstances or environmental impacts identified. The approval of this resolution adopts the SEQA exemption, approves the project, and authorizes the filing of the notice of exemption with the county clerk and the Office of Planning and Research. Filing the notice of exemption begins a thirty-five-day legal review period during which challenges may be filed. And it ensures transparency and opportunity for public awareness of the project at Mary Collins at Cherry Valley. Excellent.
Okay, as we, uh, what's the benefit for, uh, having that exemption?
Um, what, the benefits can be, are timing, um, cost, going through a SEQA project, it could be very time-studied, could be time, very expensive and time-consuming. Um, and really, the exemptions exist because there are really only reasons in the state of California why you would need to, to go through the process, so rather, rather than having it flipped, they do it, it's easier to get an exemption, so they do it that way. And, oh, it changes the window from a hundred and eighty days to thirty-five.
Can you explain what SEQA is? Thank you.
Yes, um, the, it is the Calif- it's the California Envir- Environmental Quality Act that requires for buildings, um, in certain situations. If this was a brand-new school doing types of environmental studies, including, it could be traffic, it could be, um, hazardous material. It could be flight patterns, if you were looking for something with drones. Um, so it's, it, protection's in place for building in California to make sure that any hazardous materials or things that can really impact a facility or an area are looked at. For Mary Collins, one of the exemptions is, is that we are not increasing, um, by seven classrooms, though it's a seven-classroom building because we are replacing some of them. If this was a building that was over ten classrooms or a certain amount of square footage over the current square footage, we would then need to look at the, the, um, things like traffic patterns and things like that.
Right, because it's not gonna increase our ability to enroll by that much, that traffic is going to be ongoing, obviously, construction traffic will be icky for a little while, but it's not going to be two hundred new students.
No, um, the, the class that made for this middle school, we were talking about it earlier today, I believe they are in like fourth or fifth grade now that were added before, the only changes that we saw in, um, this year enrollment over last year, we had an addition of a, half of a TK class, so they were already in a classroom, we had one and a half classes last year. Now we have two, um, so that doesn't impact the build, needing to build.
I move to approve resolution twenty-five, twenty-six, dash, eighteen.
I second.
I have one other question. So, um, if we're exempting from SEQA, did the, and we don't have our facilities master plan yet, and I'm hoping that the, um, that what we put in our resolution for facilities going forward that were, um, environmental, environmentally, um, responsible, how are, how is that going to be? I mean, this wasn't, this, this, of course, wasn't part of the facilities master plan, so I just want to make sure that the same provisions are being, um, served under this, under what the new, what the plans are for the classroom. Like basically, what were the environmental safeguards that were put into the plan and originally that we got from the architects?
Yep, that is, um, when I talk about for the SEQA specifically, I'm talking about the materials and the ground materials, so the dirt has been tested already, like we had to go through testing to make sure we would qualify for these exemptions. Yep, that's exactly what I, perfect.
Excellent, okay, uh, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, very good. Oh, you're off the hook now. Okay, the insurance requirements for independent contractors.
Exactly, so we'll, we'll do this one together. This is an, um, this is an interesting one, so, um, this is for the for independent contractors, someone like Dave Nettles that was, was brought up. Um, as well as anyone who's, who's on our campuses doing, uh, after-school, could be during the school day, could be after-school. Um, if, if they're an independent contractor, they're not an employee of the school district, so the school, as a school district, we already have SAM insurance, sexual abuse, molestation, and just in case someone were to file a claim against the district, we're covered. This is for, really for the independent contractor, if there, if there were a, um, a lawsuit or an allegation, the recommendation from, um, from RESIG is that they have this insurance. Now, what we've seen from at least a couple of our, uh, of our independent contractors is it's very challenging to get the insurance. Amanda and I talked a cou- few hours ago, and it sounds like there are actually, what, fifteen, we've gone through about fifteen?
Yeah, we have anywhere from, I'd say, ten to twenty-five independent contractors a year, depending on the year, sometimes more.
Who work with students and, and for the most part, and it may be because it's independent, like a, a one-person thing versus a group, I don't know what the challenge is, but we've had a couple people have said it's very challenging insurance to get, um, and the, the amount that it costs is, is, shouldn't be prohibited because they should be able to just charge the district for it.
But can I, can I ask for clarification for you before? You said how many do we work with, and then you said a couple, what was that number you said?
Um, um, independent contractors that work specifically with student, we have other independent contractors. Um, anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five a year.
Okay, and then Matthew, you were saying a couple of them have said.
It's been two, yeah, at least two that I know of, I don't know.
That was an issue at McDowell a lot last year.
Yes.
And this isn't to protect the students, it's to protect the contractor, right?
If, well, kind of both, I mean, if the, if the students, so if a, when I called our insurance, when I called RESIG, our insurance carrier, and said, what would happen if this were, like, so one of them, one of the examples is an after-school performing arts, right? It's, it's a little bit different than what, than the example that was given earlier. The example that was given earlier, and this is where I'm finding, I'm, I'm seeing this nuance just coming right now, right? If, uh, we have an independent contractor coming during the school day, who's under the supervision of the principal or a teacher in a classroom versus someone who's working after-school, to where typically we, we may or may not have a teacher or a staff member there. But it's all kind of, it's all kind of melded together, it is to protect the independent contractor and in some ways the student, because if a student or a family, if a family alleges, hey, this person, you know, they were, um, you can imagine all sorts of scenarios, I'm not going to get into weird stuff, but, um, if there's an allegation against an independent contractor, who's protect, you know, according to RESIG, you know, pretty much a hundred percent of the time, the district's also going to be um, a party to the, to the lawsuit. Do you want to add into that? Because I think you had some other.
I, I was just going to add that it really protects a- all of the parties, it protects the district. Because if the independent contractor does not have the insurance, the district then becomes the only person named with insurance, it protects the, um, independent contractor, people are not always honest, um, so in a situation where it was deemed that the information was false, there would be no protection from the district for the independent contractor, and then, um, uh, if the unthinkable happens to a family and a student, it gives them more protection. Even if the district was named, it increases the amount of resources available, um, to that family for care and needs.
So, and, so I did go through, down like a little bit of a rabbit hole, just to see how difficult it would be, because I know we had talked and like folks were saying they're having a hard time finding insurance, I found a bunch of companies online. And so I did the whole chat, like, hey, can you quote me some prices? And it was like two hundred and thirty dollars a year, or about twenty-one dollars and eight cents a month. And so if someone were to file a claim against us, like their insurance would cover like the initial costs of the attorney's fees instead of our insurance having to cover all of that, so at least like we wouldn't be paying for that initial, that's just what I found online, I don't know. But there were, there were a bunch of quotes, and I can send you the link, um, of like reputable insurance companies for educational consultant services. So, I mean, I don't know who they went to, that's just what I found, I don't, that, I just went through the process.
The quote I heard was three thousand eight hundred.
Yeah, there was like, there was, there were ranges, that was like in the low end, the higher end I saw like four thousand. But if there's a range and, because before people were saying like, this was an impossible insurance to get.
Yeah.
So I mean, so I, I don't know.
So one thing, one thing we could consider is looking at, I mean, we could look at Santa Rosa model and thinking about if it's during the school day and they're under the supervision of, you and I haven't even talked about this, but if they were in the supervision, maybe, or, or what do you, I mean.
But then also this Santa Rosa.
I know it, I know what you think, I know.
But this, the Santa Rosa.
I'm just trying to find.
Dated from like, um, two and a half years ago, and this company provides like an online coding camp, so it's not in person. So it's not in person, I don't think. That's what this is, Code Rev. So I don't know if there's, yeah, so if there, if they have another example, like an in-person, um, long form?
I just.
Reference.
I just said, I mean, the, the, for me, I think we should be doing everything we can to protect students' families in our, in our district, clearly, obviously. The, my concern is the, the tension with, what I don't want to have happen, and this is what's happened now, at, at least with, at least with two people that I know, is the frustration over trying to find this insurance, basically saying, hey, um, I'm just not gonna work with your, your school district because I'm, I'm working with all sorts of other districts in the area that don't require this. PCS is requiring this. It's, I'm, I'm spending hours just researching it, trying to find it. And so we're gonna back out and just say, I'm not gonna work through the district, and we're, and so people.
But what about the companies that have been able to find insurance? Like you were saying that, sorry, the contractors, you're saying a few of them haven't been able to get insurance? What about the ones that have been able to get insurance? Like, what are their, I would, I would, I guess I would want to know, like, what are, what have they been quoted? What are they paying? Who are their policy holders? Because if those folks are able to get it, then can we then like set them up with?
Right, can we have a short list of like three that we would recommend or something?
Because I feel the type of, like giving a waiver. Because if something were to happen, and then like we're on the front page of the paper, they're like, PCS gave them a waiver for sexual abuse insurance. Just like, that makes you feel uncomfortable as a parent and the optics. And especially if this insurance does exist. If some people, even, even if just half of the people were able to get it. I, I'm just one.
Right, are you gonna let your kid be in the club that, the play that's the person that doesn't have sexual abuse insurance?
Right.
And, and to be clear, it's not, you're still fingerprinting, doing background checks, all the things that we do. It's really, it's designed to protect the independent contractor, but i- if, what we could do is go back into this one independent contractor and say, hey, here's a list of companies that will do it. Here's how you need, here's what you need to do, and, um.
Do we have?
And that's, and that's it, and we can, we just pulled the item.
Do we have independent contractors that have this?
Yes.
Insurance?
Yep, we do.
And they're paying three thousand dollars a year? Or do we know?
One of them, I know, I know one of them is. I don't know how much the other ones are paying.
I, sorry, I haven't asked what the costs are. I'm happy to reach out to, um, some of the vendors.
But like usually when people like a consultant like gives us a price, don't they usually include like, you know, if they were gonna charge us three thousand dollars a month, they charge us three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a month because that covers their two hundred and fifty dollars a month of that three thousand dollar policy, correct? So it's not like they're working for free and we're asking them.
Yep.
To.
It's not even, it's not even the cost, it's the challenge of getting it. But I, I agree with you. I mean, I know I, I spoke with Ellen and I've since sort of changed my thinking on this too. I don't, I, I don't think it's a bad thing that for us just to make a flat-out requirement for it. I just worry about losing really good, really good people, particularly if it's during, during the school day and they're working underneath the supervision of someone else, and something could still happen during that time. If maybe we, maybe the recommendation is just, we pull this and say to the one or two contractors that are struggling to find it, here's, here are the companies, as long as we're clear with them, here's where you need to go, and if, to Joanna's point, you know, if it's, let's say it's even a thousand dollar, a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars, if your quote for us is five thousand, then charge us, then make it seven thousand because it's not like we want them to eat all the cost. It's not the cost, it's the, I just don't wanna not have great people working with our, with our students because there's this insurance, uh, an issue with getting in, in insurance. So I, I would be fine doing that.
Also, it looks like from the material, Santa Rosa requires it. Uh, sexual abuse and molestation coverage.
I think what she had, she's given this.
But they do have it bolded where it says.
It's the contractors directly supervising children, but it doesn't say alone. But anyway, they do require it, so.
But again, this is for an online.
No, that's just in the contract.
Right, right.
That's just on the contract, though, any contractor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Right? Is that right? Sorry, I shouldn't be.
Yeah, we could, yeah, we could look at doing a waiver, we could look at it if they're in the classroom with the teacher. It's still not, you know, foolproof, right?
But then isn't that just giving us more liability? I don't want to do that. Like, once the teacher goes to the bathroom and.
They've been fingerprinted.
Yes.
And they have liability insurance, right, and indemnity. I, I don't.
Right, so if an allegation is made, then their, their insurance company has to cover the cost of the initial investigations, the lawyers, all of that.
Right.
Not ours. If it's just purely an allegation, then God forbid it turns into something more than their insurance company pays. I just think when we see what just happened at Cinnabar, and then there were examples in Santa Rosa, Santa Rosa High School, CCLA had allegations.
Yeah, a background check, this means you haven't done anything yet or been caught for doing anything yet. It doesn't mean you won't do anything in the future.
Like my husband, by the way, mine and Amanda's husband found out today are both signed up to be mentors, and their process is so extensive. But I'm just like, we should at least be comparable to that when we're paying. These guys are doing it for free. I mean, you're doing, you're a mentor for free, and you know how extensive that process. I just think of, I don't, I don't want to pull back on this. I'm not comfortable signing off on a waiver for something like this for students. That's just how I feel, especially if there's, if it exists out there, if the insurance, we can find a reasonable policy.
So I'm hearing that we should pull it.
Yes.
Is that right? Okay, so do we, we need a motion?
I move to table the insurance requirements for independent contractors' action item.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? All right, then move on. Thank you. Good discussion. Okay. Shall we, we're just gonna go forward. Comments, uh, from the public on discussion, uh, information items? Seeing none, we'll go on to discussion item one. The Williams Settlement Quarterly Uniform Complaint Report for July first through September thirtieth. Seems like you were just here.
I know, isn't it exciting? It comes around so often.
Happy to see you.
Okay, um, so as you hopefully saw, I'm happy to report that there were no Williams complaint in the previous quarter.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay, any discussion? All right, thank you. All right, their first reading of amended board policy four-one-one-one, recruitment and selection.
Yeah, so, uh, if I could, I'll just talk about all three of them in, in a group because they're very similar, and maybe you notice that what they're separating is, um, forty-one-eleven is about certificated personnel, forty-two-eleven is about classified personnel, and forty-three is about administrators and supervising personnel. The language in each of those is identical. So they are identical, they are just in a different section of the board policy regarding those employees. So, um, most of the language, I tried to give you a summary about the changes that you might have seen. Most of the, uh, most of the languages were right out of the, uh, the recommended CSBA policies. Part of this was, as you might recall, we had a operation analysis report done on human resources last, uh, last year, and one of those was recommending updating the policy to reflect our board goal to have a staff that is representative of our students' diversity. And the language in CSBA has, there were other things as well. You could see that there were, there was things about, um, labor code compliance and employee cannabis use and other things, but there was, there was language also about our board goal to, to, that acknowledges recruiting staff that is representative of our students and what a, what an important thing that is for our students. One thing that we also, that, that I am putting in here as well, which is an addition, not on the CSBA policy, is the intention that we have in our hiring guide that we've updated to have as much as is practicable diverse hiring panels. So, uh, that's an important thing for us also to consider how we make sure that the panels are diverse. So that's something that we've added into this that wasn't in the original policy.
It's wonderful. Okay, and all three of those are the same, basically, yeah.
They, they are identical.
So with the, the, what, was the cannabis one like, like not in there before, or was that new?
So when I, when I did, when you pull up the, the document, you can see that, uh, the, the text that's black is what was there and is staying. The text that read was there and we're crossing it out, and the green is all new. So the, the cannabis stuff was all new. And essentially, I mean, as I was reading, it was just complying with law, that we're not going to be holding people accountable for their use outside of the workplace. Um, we are concerned if it's being used at the workplace, but, um, yeah. Exactly.
Exactly.
Exactly, so.
Exactly. Okay, thank you. I just thought that was funny.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question. So, I'm trying to figure out how to word this. I wonder, since this is a first reading, is this a first reading? Yeah.
This is.
If we can put something in there around like education of the hiring panels. So one employer I worked for, we all had to do anti-bias training before every round of interviews, even though it was on like three panels that year, it doesn't matter. We still had to do the anti-bias training in like different types of bias, not just racial or gender. But some people have biases towards people who went to like Ivy League schools or worked in certain settings. So I, I don't know where that would go. Maybe if it's not the policy, then the AR. But I would want to see some type of languages, language or a policy around that, or even thinking about what that would look like. And then also we talk about the retention. I don't know if that would go in here. I mean, this is more of the hiring. I think we have a retention issue, but, um, I don't know. So I don't know what that would look like.
The short answer is yes. We can, we can consider both of those. I think, uh, on a side note, we have been doing, uh, human resources. We've been organizing a community of practice with a number of employees to, to look at the recommendations and talk about, about how we implement those and how we adjust our practices as an organization. And both of those questions that you just brought up, Joanna, were, were high concerns for that, that group. And we've been discussing, how do we do bias training and how do we navigate that? And, and, and get our hiring committees to engage in not only a training, but discussion about that and understanding about, about the biases that they're bringing to the table and how to address that. So that absolutely fits in here. Retention was a, a very high concern. I, I don't know, uh, I'll put some thought into it. I don't know if it fits in here because this is recruitment and selection. And this, that's the other piece of, once you've selected, how do you hold on to staff? But I can look also in the policy and see if there's a better place for that. But I appreciate both those questions. Those are things that we've been, we just had our third meeting on Monday, and they've been, it's been very big in our conversation, both of those points.
Yeah, I think it would be good to have it, I know it can be a pain in the butt if you're on a million hiring committees, but even a half-hour anti-bias training to kick off the day and just a level setting for everybody and get them thinking about it. Because if it's one, just part of PD at the beginning of the year, it can get kind of lost, you know?
Okay, anything else? Okay, I think, uh, I think that, I have no questions.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
I think it looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Water heater.
Water heater replacement project.
Woo-hoo.
Yes, it's actually funded by PG&E, huh?
Yeah.
I know, that's, I was shocked.
Cannabis of PG&E.
I can't believe they're funding all of it, but.
It was not, not all PG&E.
So I spent the last hour telling you all of the ways I spend all of the money. Now I'm gonna show you how we saved a little bit of money.
Well organized.
All right, so, um, a, a meeting or two ago, I mentioned that we had been working with the city and the county on a water heater replacement program, and it is now complete. So our goal was to replace aging electric-resistant water heaters with energy-efficient heat pump intakeless units. We worked with the PG&E Energy Savings Program, the Sonoma County Energy Division, and the City of Petaluma Sustainability Staff. Deb Fox and Elliot Whitehurst were the ones who put us, um, gave us this information and, um, helped us all the way through. So I'd like to thank both the city and the county for their help. We replaced twenty-two units across multiple sites. Um, the whole project was funded through the PG&E and Sonoma County Energy Savings Program. Yeah, so, um, the cost to the district for the, a- and they not only paid for the water heaters, they installed all of them too. So where all of the work was completed from start to finish. Um, Lisa Davis, our capital facilities manager, was on-site working with the teams. Um, but other than that, um, that was fully funded. Zero cost to the district, and we will have long-term reductions in energy use and maintenance needs. We're anticipating a cost savings of ten to fifteen thousand dollars annually, which will really help as energy rates continue to rise. These systems are expected to last ten to fifteen years and will require less upkeep. And, um, the goal is fewer remer- emergency replacements. Long-term savings and benefits include greenhouse gas reduction and sustainability alignment, support Sonoma County and District sustainability goals, meet state energy efficiency and electrification mandates, the facility relatability and modernization, improve hot water performance for daily operations, and strengthens infrastructure readiness for future projects. So we'll continue to monitor and report our results. Um, the City of Petaluma and the county has asked that we share our, these best practices with nearby districts. Um, we were the first district in the county to participate. So Lisa will be reaching out to our partner districts, and, um, we'll continue to look for efficiency and other, um, grants and sustainability options through the city and the county. And that's it.
Yay, good night. Excellent. That sounds so cool. Wonderful. And that's happening. It's, it's.
It's done.
We did, yes, happened.
Yeah, it, it finished about three, two or three weeks ago, I got the final report right when it was time to do board docs.
Well, that's great. Thank you, PG&E and county and the city.
And hot water is still working in the bathrooms, guys?
Like in the. There is not a legal mandate to have hot water in bathrooms.
Oh, no, 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 yeah. I just was trying to think where students would interact with hot water. Yeah, we gotta get some more hands in the. Yeah. Well, there's hot water somewhere. I don't know if it's in the bathroom.
But the heat pumps also operate with the air conditioning.
For our monitors, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's good.
Yeah.
Probably in our kitchens, in our staff bathrooms. Um, there are, not at high school, but are, at our lower grades, there are reasons why we do not, um, have hot water. It's those, a little, our little learners do not burn their, hurt themselves.
Fair. That checks out. Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we go on to first reading of board policy and administrative regulation three-five-one-five, campus security.
All right, thank you. This item reflects updated guidance from CSBA to align our board policy and administrative regulation with new state and federal requirements. The revisions strengthen our overall safety framework by ensuring each school site maintains comprehensive, up-to-date campus security plan consistent with current legislation and best practices. Overall, this policy update reinforces our district's commitment to safe, secure learning environments and ensures our practices remain current, compliant, and responsive to evolving safety standards. And I do believe that there is a change that might want to be made.
Yes, um, under reporting. Yes. Um, under reporting and regarding and responding to threats, there, it says additionally, anyone who receives or learns of a health or safety threat related to school or school activity is encouraged. I want them to be required. Encouraged to report the threat to school or district admin. And I, I think encouraged is a little wishy-washy.
I think mandate could be a little too strong and I don't want someone to get in trouble because they learned about something, but they didn't realize it was a how, like, what's the, what's the punishment if they're like, it's like the thing about like knowingly transmitting a disease, like how do you prove that someone knew they had a disease?
Well, I would imagine that this is going to be shared. So that people will be aware of what's in it. Yes?
We absolutely can share it um, after it is approved.
I wonder what's the current language around like the Stop It app? Cause it's kind of the same thing. Like are kids like required? Like to your point, are they required or are they like encouraged? Cause it should probably match. You know what I'm saying?
It's probably encouraged.
Yeah, I was actually just talking about uh, to my principal about the Stop It app, because we want to try to use it to our advantage about reporting unsafe habits in the bathroom. And the biggest thing that I brought up is that um, as much as Stop It is a good app, it is taken as a joke with students. Um, and it was especially in middle school, we would have fake Stop It reports. So let's say someone wanted to mess with their buddy and they'd just report something horrible. That was absolutely false. And so I talked to her about it and she was like, there's only been two reports this year and those have been absolutely true. Um, so it's good. So I think there was like a, kind of like a stigma around students and using Stop It and being immature about that. Again, I only know this for Casa Grande. I can't speak for middle school levels, uh, cause the maturity very much differences there. Uh, but I think it's a good app, but um, if it comes to students actually going to report things, um, we'll have to, I was kind of thinking maybe using Five Star or something that we use, because just the, the stigma around um, Stop It is very hard to stop with teenagers who are already very set in their mind. I think um, teachers and adults are able to be like, yes, use it, do that, but um, some teenagers not as open-minded, definitely. So.
What's the difference between Five Star and Stop It reporting?
So I'm not sure if Five Star could do reporting. We use it for hall passes, bathroom passes. We use it, most students use it multiple times a day. Um, well, I kind of want to explore with that. Um, with bathroom safety, is, is there a way to record on Five Star about a way to stop um, bullying or whatever it is? Because when you pull up that big purple screen on your computer, everyone knows what you're doing. You could become shy about it. And um, our whole thing we were talking about is report what time you were in the bathroom. And if you saw like someone with red shoes was being mean to someone in the stall next to me or whatever, they could check back on cameras outside of the bathroom and report it to admin. So they can kind of see that behavior. Um, it's just the issue is Stop It, you could get made fun of it for it. So our kind of thought was, could we use Five Star? Cause you're already on it for your pass and you'll see the time on your computer when you get back. So we're just trying to find other ways to make students feel more safer. Uh, we want to do a QR code in the bathroom, but since phones are now unable at any points of school day or probably next year, I'm imagining. Um, we only have them during break, but most of this happens during lunch, um, during the school day, I mean. So um, that's kind of what we're trying to figure out right now, but I will get back to you when we find out more things about that.
Thank you. I wonder if it's got, if it gets any better now that they don't have any time in between classes, like on Mondays. Man, it is quick.
You would love to think so, but I have had my fair share of interesting bathroom moments this year alone. So yeah, it's um, it's, it's hard because the staff are doing everything that they can. Um, and I appreciate what they're doing, but it's too many students kind of doing not so great things. So I, I find my specific bathroom and then I use that. So I don't have to be distracted and I could just go back to class. Um, it's just the issue is that bathrooms across campus. So I have to kind of jog back to my class to make it in time to turn off my Five Star app. So um, sadly for the students that really do want a safe place, it's very hard with Five Star giving you only six or seven minutes to do so. Seven minutes. Yeah, thank you. So yeah.
So Five Star does, can be used to report um, things like bullying. It's designed for students to anonymously report safety concerns to school officials, school officials. So according to the internet.
That's good. Yeah. I'll talk to my principal, Ms. Noon, about that. And then I will definitely get back to you all.
So then getting back to the So then the question was from Ellen was that should we tighten the language on this to have it a requirement rather than encourage? Or even strongly encouraged if having that as a requirement is sketchy.
I like that.
Something to give it a little bit more teeth. So strongly encouraged, we could do the, you know, the may, the may versus shall. Shall report.
Could say like required, but like they don't, they're not going to get in trouble if they.
Who is going to read this? Which children are reading this?
Oh, true. Yeah.
Yeah. The problem with saying required is that it means that if they don't do it, there needs to be consequence and I don't know whether we have the will or the bandwidth to do that.
But if like the Five Star or the Stop It has like the stronger language.
Right.
Maybe that's the solution? Because I don't know who's reading this. I only read it because I had to, you know, like, so I you know what I mean? Like if, if you guys are the ones pushing out the stronger language and the encouragement to your fellow students, I think that's probably more beneficial than.
As Marilda, do you know what the language is around the Stop It app or um, reporting? Is it, is it like?
It's an, it's not a required. It's, it's, it's obviously highly encouraged. I will say in looking at the reports that come through, um, I think there, there've been periods of, as you're describing, where it may be used um, incorrectly. To put it lightly, but I would say that the, many of the reports that come through are valid and our administrators are following up. So, but in terms of language out there to students that it's required, I mean, it's highly encouraged. Here's a tool that you can use to report unsafe um, behaviors or concerns on the campus. Um, but the la- it does not have a required like, language on it.
Yeah, I really like the highly encouraged because uh, for starters, uh, students are going to most likely read it. And second of all, if it did say required and then they didn't report something and then that form was never given to them and then they broke a rule without even being informed about it, I feel like that would also not be very cool for them either. So.
Okay. So we, when we bring.
We want to, yeah, bring it back with the highly, right?
Highly.
I'm good with either of those words, whichever you're feeling that day, strongly or highly.
Look up the.
It'll be a surprise for the next board meeting.
There you go. Little spice.
See if you're feeling mean or.
You guys will know.
We will.
I did have one additional question around this. Actually, it's for Amanda and Esmeralda. Um, so I think it was over the summer. Um, the people at SCO brought us this whole thing that we ended up pulling. Um, that was like gonna allow them to have student information. But I feel like this board policy covers what the intention of that was without sharing information out. It talks about the superintendent designee may form a multidisciplinary team in order to identify, inquire, assess, et cetera. Potentially threatening student behavior. So I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that speaks to the nature of the intention of that previous policy that we pulled from the agenda.
Yes, and we do have a threat assessment procedure, a level one. The SCO model is level two, which involves other, obviously other agencies. Um, so it does, it does get to a little bit of that where we can bring in other mul- of other team members that um, yeah, they're partners. But yeah, this doesn't have that sharing of information in it.
Let's move on to, if we're done with this, we'll move on to board, first reading of the Board Policy and Administration Regulation three, five, one, five point four, Recovery of Property Loss and Damage.
Thank you. This is a new policy and regulation estab- which will establish clear procedures for recovering costs when district property is lost or damaged. Petaluma City Schools does not currently have this polit- policy, which has become an issue when um, items are vandalized and things like that. We do have a policy for like replacement in theft, but we had a situation um, where a porcelain toilet was broken by a rock being thrown at it. So it brought to light that we could really use um, a policy in an AR. This policy um, will ensure that the recovery processes are fair, transparent and compliant with all legal protect- protections.
And a little bounty if you turn in, turn in a criminal.
Oh, yes.
Twenty-five hundred seems good.
Any other questions? I think it's probably amazing that we haven't had a policy for this long. I just noticed that the policy for um, recruitment and selection was created, this is before, was created in nineteen sixty. So according to. Anyway, uh, okay. And then the, okay, all right, we're going on to the next ones. First reading of minis- Administrative Regulation three, five, one, six point one, Fire Drills and Fires. This also we didn't have, right?
This is a new AR. So, yeah, that established um, a district-wide procedures for conducting and responding to fire drills and fire emergencies. While our schools already practice fire drills, there has not been a standardized regulation aligned with current education code and fire marshal requirements. So adopting this regulation will ensure that all PCS sites are compliant, consistent and well-prepared to protect students and staff during fire-related incidents.
Any comments?
Yeah. I don't know if this is actually like related or unrelated to this policy, but um, I, the fire alarm has been pulled many times at Casa Grande. And I may be wrong, but I think the school might be fine if it was like a false alarm of some sort. Um, and so I remember through my years at Casa, the most the fire alarm was pulled was eight times in one day. And four times in one class period, actually. And my teacher just stopped getting up at that point. Um, but I was actually wondering, um, for like fire safety alarm, things like that. Um, I know some places have like ink that will kind of get like spilled. Um, do some places have that? Could we maybe start that in high schools? Cause I just feel like one, we're going to stop taking fire alarm seriously, which they should, they should be very serious. And I feel like that takes away from learning and it just distracts everyone. And I just feel like maybe something more to help that.
So you are correct. We are allowed a certain number of false alarms. Um, if there's an issue with the alarm itself and it goes off, the fire department has been known to give us grace, but we do have a couple of sites that we receive quarterly bills from, from the amount of false alarms. And it is not cheap. I cannot remember the amount off the top of my head, but like when I got the first one, this was new to me. I was horrified. I was like, we have to pay this?
Maybe we should add that to the board policy we just talked about, like in addition to recovery of property that's lost or damaged, like fines that are incurred because you effed around and pulled on a fire alarm eight times. Why should the taxpayers pay that fee?
That's a great point.
If you are, I guess.
There's cameras and back to the ink thing where when you pull it, ink will spill in your hands. So if there's an actual fire, ink is never going to mean anything to you. But if you're guilty and you weren't supposed to do it, but I know that is a long process to get those things. Uh, but that's just an idea that I heard worked for a lot of other schools.
Yeah. I think um, our replacing fire alarms actually is a DSA project, but we could look at for all of our modernization and our new buildings potentially adding um, the ink ones.
So then if we have it in our policy for, you know, property damage or um, recovery of property loss or damage, that there would be a fine if you're discovered. So we could do it now, even though we don't have them yet.
Yep. I have a note, highly, for now, highly encouraged. And then cost incurred like fire alarms to give myself a note for tomorrow. So thank you.
Could you have it where you, like, if the student is identified? Because I feel like even like tomorrow, like most of our fire things, we, we don't really have this problem, but I imagine most of our fire things have uh, cameras, right? Miss O'Connor, like on the hallway? I don't know. Okay. But um, and then if you can identify you, them, you find them. And if not, the district takes it. Like, can you just do that or is that? Like takes, pays the fine, like.
Yeah, that's what we do now.
I'm just saying, like, does it have to be all or nothing? Like, could we just start the, it now? Like the.
Well, we could bring, yeah, once it's approved, we can, if the person, I mean, now that there's going to be a bounty.
Yeah, if you all know who pulls the fire alarm, you can get twenty-five hundred.
Sure, if we had a way for camp.
It's not just for the students. Get that? Not enough to snitch, Sandra?
Yeah, my most memorable fire alarm story was in, when it was pouring rain outside and there was a fire outside. Um, and it ruined my Chromebook sadly, but um, there was no fire in the pouring rain, believe it.
See, that's another cost that the kid who pulled the thing should pay.
Going to solve our budget crisis with this new board policy.
Okay. Excellent. All right. So.
Thank you.
This is great. I like this. Okay. And now we just go on to future business. Any future business?
Well.
Ellen? Please don't throw anything at me, but once again, secondary math assessments. Um, I don't know, maybe I missed the meeting where they were discussed, but I don't remember having them discussed. And it's something that's, we've been sort of talking about for what, three years? So I would like that to be future business. Wonderful.
Also have um, bathroom po- bathroom practices and um, athletic survey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And? Anybody else? I have one. Well, I just want to kind of put on, put it in our discussion is that um, I want to have a study session on the facilities master plan. That includes the landscape architect um, plan. And so since we had that October twenty-eighth, set aside for a study session. So I've talked to Matthew, but we, we, it could be November fourth, which is election day. You won't be here?
Ryan and I will probably not be able to be here. Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And then the next week is November eleventh, which is Veterans Day.
Right.
And then the following week is November eighteenth, where we have a board, we already have a board.
We already have, yeah. So um.
We're allowed to, we're allowed, allowed to meet on days that aren't Tuesday.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, for sure. For sure. We could do it on Tuesday. We just have to.
We could do it that week of.
I find it was November sixth. I'll be alive. But I, on November fourth, Ryan and I are going to be like calling voters and stuff.
Okay. So November sixth? November sixth is a Thursday?
Can we get?
LCAP and budgeted.
Oh, is that on November? Oh, okay. Yeah. It's going to have to be it.
So is VAPA.
Unless we want to put it off until next year.
Okay. I have a question about the master plan. The facilities master plan.
What's that?
Um, the consultants for um, three separate consultants are, have been planning on coming on the, at the regular board meeting on November eighteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah. And my problem with that is that it's an eight-hundred-page document and it's a, it's an action item. So I, I don't think that, I think we need to have um, at least an hour and a half or an hour.
Well, like we meet earlier on the eighteenth to still try and respect their schedule.
We could do the study session on the eighteenth.
Like do it at four, four-thirty.
You, you had asked them about the possibility, right, of the twenty-eighth or the fourth or no?
Well, the, the twenty-eighth, they're, they're, we have been having, that, we have been having internal meetings and we have asked um, DTA, who's doing the facilities master plan, to make changes to the document. So that wouldn't give. So that wouldn't give, the twenty-eighth wouldn't give them enough time to make the changes for that. I did ask about November fourth, but it sounds like that won't work, so.
So, yeah, and the sixth is.
Can we get a bullet point or something? I mean, eight hundred pages long, I don't think that any of us have the time to read that. So is there a way we can get some summaries going?
That is, that is what they are working on to is a summary. It's a very, that, it would be extremely difficult for anybody to, to read the eight-hundred-and-seventeen pages.
End of day awake, I imagine.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so summaries would be awesome. Thanks.
So do you think that, so what do you guys think about having it on the eighteenth as a study session at four? Three-thirty or four?
Yeah.
Will that give us enough time to digest all of that with the landscape architect plan also?
I would say four.
And then vote on it that night?
I would say four because we also have closed session and we don't know what, so.
At least four.
Yeah, so four would be the latest. Three-thirty would be better. I don't know, though, if Caitlin and Ryan can make it.
Right.
I mean, it was my idea, so I'll make it work, but, yeah, I mean, pre-November fourth and post-November fourth are two different worlds when you work in politics, so.
So then we keep it, keep it on the eighteenth, we'll just do it earlier, study session.
Will that give us enough time to digest everything and be able to vote on it that night? Because she's going to bring it back as an action item.
Maybe if we get the summaries beforehand, so that we can have read them.
That would be great.
I think too that it probably, the, the vote on it is, it's more of a, an accept kind of a vote. So that likely could come back to the December, the December would be the next meeting for action too. I think getting it out here is also part of that meeting. We'd like to start the bond implementation, but everybody needs to see the document. So that's kind of the importance of finishing it. So I think it would be fine. Do the study session, give you, everybody, that way if you guys have questions, it would give DTA time to, and they could always come back on December, or I can just answer questions for approval.
November eighteenth would be the study session.
Study session, the study, we have the conversation and then we can bring it back in December for final.
Okay, perfect. That sounds great. And then can you guys make it early on the eighteenth, November eighteenth? Are we going to be, be recording it?
We can.
It would be great to record it.
Especially since it's the regular.
Yeah, yeah, because we do have a, I don't know, you take care of yourself. It was just like, I'd love for you guys to hear it too, so, but just come when you can and then we'll have our meeting. Thank you. That's great that they can, because it's, you know, it's my thing.
Yeah, and sorry, just to clarify, it's okay to bring for the study session, the Lance, their names are all too close at this.
I know.
Landscape Master Plan, would you like that, is that, it's a much smaller document? I think it would probably be okay to come for board approval on the November.
But, okay, so my idea of having them together was because it's, the, the landscape architecture piece is part of the environmental action of the, of our resolution, which then feeds into the master plan. So I just, I, I just want to see how it coordinates, if they can do that without having to take a lot of time. I understand time is super.
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't clear. They, they will both present at the.
The study session?
The.
November eighteenth.
November eighteenth.
Study session, I'm so sorry. The study session, but if, can the landscape master plan, can it later that evening go for approval? It's a, a much smaller document.
Yeah, unless there needs to be like serious changes, which I don't.
We can add it and we can always pull it. A couple of sites waiting for that, so perfect.
Yes, perfect. We hashed it out. Thank you. All right. We are going to adjourn to board session to finish, post-session. And at, so we are adjourning, open session.
If anyone wants to go to the Casa Grande Hatchery fundraiser before you go in your close meeting, if you want to come to me, I could give you some tickets. November first, Saturday, it's from five to ten at the Lucchese Center, raffle tickets, dinner. Um, yeah, so the only, the only thing is I'm in the class and I get credit for selling tickets. So the issue with that is I kind of needed to give it to you in person, like with the cash. I don't know if you guys could order online. You know what I'm talking about? Okay, yes, perfect. The date is Saturday, November first, five to ten.